Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting, Tuesday, June 10th, 2025, on the continued revenue superintendent schools. As I usually mention, if you're here in person, you have the opportunity to say a few words at the the public forum portion. If you're not here and you're watching this by video or live, right now, you can certainly call the district clerk's office at 716-751-9399, and she will make sure you give the message to the board for comments or questions. At this time, I'll turn the board's meeting over to Detective Carter. Detective Superintendent Carter, please stand for the question.
Why do we need to survive on the United States of America? In a true republic, where we just stand as one nation, on the ground, in the beautiful liberty and justice of our.
Yeah, one of you may improve the minutes, David Baker, please, twenty twenty five minutes. So, a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed?
Oh, baby.
Item two A, resolved in Wilson Central School District Board of Education, approved following by E for D in financial consent agenda, that's submitted by D description. You have motion, so move a second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Motion care. Item three, special presentation, Hunter, so.
Thank you. This reminds me of my first superintendent's conference day. Eighteen and all the teachers sat in the back room. So, I feel like I had to go to the middle of the room. So, I'm, for some reason, I'm just joking with the turn these chairs around and sit right there. But I will. Good evening, everyone. We have two presentations, and I'll do them as long as I don't fall. Two separate presentations this evening. First of all, we have students represented Wilson Central School District at the Skills USA competition. And the Skills USA, if you were watching our last board meeting, or are here in attendance, in attendance, it's a competition based out of, or at least now, Reddose's Vocational Center, Niagara Center Road. That speaks to be a number of different competitions based upon certain categories. And I'll tell you what category each one of these ones. The one we did earlier, last month, was the sort of the finalists in the regional state, or regional, and these are the students that placed first or second at the state level competition. So, I will begin. It would be nice. All right, so this is Kyle Hamers. Kyle placed second place at the Pulp in the Power Equipment Technology Competition. So, on behalf of Wilson Central School District, this certificate of excellence hereby granted to Kyle Hamers for outstanding performance in 2025 New York State Skills USA Competition, second place Power Equipment Technology Competition. Joey? This is Joey Dane Jones, and Joey placed second place in the Team Works Competition. As I understood, what's teamwork?
Uh, we're as a performance group, and I was part of it. We, uh, we had to build a terrible partnership with plumbing, electrical, masonry, and I faced it up in like around, you know.
So, if I need some help with something outstanding, just, just check. So, this is, on behalf of the Wilson Central School District Certificate of Excellence, it's hereby granted to Joey Dane Jones for outstanding performance in the 2025 New York State Skills USA Competition, obtaining second place in the Team Works Competition. Congratulations. Kyle, I heard shares was not signed by the board president. That must have been, must have been Joey's loss, so this one, but sometimes they stick together. I'll grab it when we're done on that one. John, come on up.
Possible?
Excellent. All right, so this is Sean Proff, and he placed second place in the Tech Computer Application Competition.
Would you want to tell us what that was? It was based, competition based on computer applications, like Excel, or PowerPoint, Access, and like data, stuff like that.
Heard PowerPoint. The rest didn't get it. On behalf of the Wilson Central School District Certificate of Excellence, it's hereby granted to Sean Proff for outstanding performance in 2025 New York State Skills USA Competition, obtaining second place in Tech Computer App Competition. Congratulations. And the next presentations, we have to do the number of our staff members who are retiring from the studio. Usually in May, we have our tenure reception, and in June, we have our retirees' procession. That's what this is. After it's all done, you take a break, have a cake. Please don't take the mess. This is a horrible thing. We don't want that to happen. No. I, uh, I am going to start with Parker, come on up. Well, Parker's a little too young to retire. Um, but he has represented the voice of students at Wilson Central School District for the past school year. He's done an awesome job, and we wanted to recognize him for great, giving the certificate. If you drink coffee, would you give me a coffee? Probably what you're talking about. So, on behalf of Wilson Central School District, Parker, I want to give this certificate and grateful appreciation to Parker for dedicated service as Executive Student Board Member from September 10th, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. I'm going to turn it over to Parker. Begin. Fran, come on up.
Yep, so everybody knows Fran, she's. So, I'd like to start off by saying, Fran is 29 years.
Yeah.
Dedicated service. I've only known Fran for about nine years, but I think I've gotten her pretty well. When I, when people retire, then you just start thinking about the tree. The tree that I tell you about, Fran, is how serious she takes her job. Ever since I started, she was the leader at the high time at the high school here. And, uh, she was always the greatest. She voiced her opinion, which I always appreciate. I know some people, I don't appreciate that, but the more honest you are with me, the more I appreciate. And I always appreciated that I didn't have to worry about the, uh, the, uh, the mission. If something happened that night, number one, Fran would take care of it, or number two, Fran would reach out to who she knew had to take care of it. So, um, she's dependable, um, I could always count on her. She's a master of her, her, her job, I mean, no better than all her job. During COVID, it got really hectic there, and, uh, she was one of the pillars that made us strong enough to be able to get through what we had to do. So, as she journeyed into her retirement here, I think I hope she can do everything that she enjoys to do. I just want to thank her again and congratulate her on her retirement.
On behalf of, on behalf of the Wilson Central School District, upon your retirement, given this grateful appreciation to Francis Kozinki for dedicated service during an honorable career, 28, 29 years. Fortunately, two of our high school teachers were not able to make it this evening, so, but we're still going to recognize them. Give them wherever you like to go.
All right, so Jerry Johnson, um, Wilson graduate and awareness from under the 1986 New York State Championship softball team. Um, this is Jonathan, uh, was hired in 1996, started out as an eighth grade science teacher. God bless for that. And then grew up to the high school in 2000, and was a biology, living environment teacher since. Uh, she was a sophomore class advisor for a number of years, um, helped out in the summer academic assistance program. I think the biggest thing that I learned from Mary when I came over to go over for Dan, she is really passionate about what she does, really cares about her students, holds her students to a very high standard, both academically and behaviorally, and I think that really does benefit kids in the long run. Consistently, her kids achieve really well in state assessments, and that's a testament to, you know, all the time, whatever she put into about her career. So, really, just, you know, thank you for being done. Really appreciate it, getting missed, and wish you all the best, and we give the special honor of advantage of. Thank you.
Listen. Something I found out, Mary, from Mary, the first, uh, first year I was here, and I want to thank her for her service to, 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 to military. Upon your retirement from Wilson Central School District, given in grateful appreciation to Mary Johnson for dedicated service during an honorable career.
All right, so we have two other retirees from high school that I'm going to be here tonight. I'll start with Marcy and Nino. So, Mrs. Nino was hired in 1994 as a special education teacher. Uh, she worked with a number of general education teachers across three, grade levels of disciplines over the years. She was also part of the summer academic assistance program in the past, and just want to thank her for the impact she had on our students, though she was here, and I wish her all the best in retirement. And then we have Bonnie Andres. Uh, Mrs. Andres was hired at Wilson in 2005, and served as the useful director for years since she started here. Um, in 2013, Mrs. Andres was named a distinguished alumnus of the Newport Central School District, and was also selected as the youngest town citizen of the year by the Niagara River Region Chamber of Commerce. Um, just recently, in 2025, Mrs. Andres received the BPO NC MBA Award for Excellence in Music Education. I don't lie, her impact on our students in our community of the medical world, she really does so much for promoting music education, not only for our kids here, but just, you know, community-wide as well. Um, so I really want to thank her for everything she's done with her time here, and again, wish her all the best in retirement.
Mr. Ben?
Let's go. Mo loves the limelight, Bronson. Ms. Mahar.
Aw.
That's been me.
Yeah, I knew this was going to be around.
All right. Maureen Mo-Mahar, legend, ABC, 30 years of service. Before entering the world of education, Mo lived glamorous life in her, her education scene. Her deadlines were soul-crushing, it grew shit. Eventually, she decided molding young minds out of like less stress. And we were lucky to hire her. Mo started out as substitute teacher, as well as a home teacher before officially becoming our beloved library specialist in 1996. And from that day on, she never stopped adding job titles to her resume, faster than most of us do. Any email sort of inbox. So, just a few of Mo's unofficial and official, um, job descriptions. She was a yearbook advisor at one point. She was a JV and mercy softball coach and member of the 1986. Yes, that was a big feat, so. Three, yes, yes. Plus the 1987. You're older than me. Uh, Mo is also a T-shirt coordinator for the district. Anytime you get a T-shirt or fundraiser, this is our hail. Uh, she's a tech lizard, a lot better than Bonnie. Who rose everybody ready? Uh, she's older than let me tell. Mo is the staff counselor as well, right at us right there. She's an unpaid counselor for the district. She's, uh, counseled a lot of staff, well, as, as students, so basically a paid therapist. She is the United Way, she was the United Way chairperson at one point for the district, and she'll build you into taking money out of your wallet at first. She was a grant, she did run a grant for the district as well, maybe more than one. Mr. Z said you did. Her file is probably thicker, it's probably thicker than Dan Johnson's. No, just with all the. Um, Mo was instrumental in designing this library that we're in right now. Just think it's great that we're here honoring you in this library this evening, so. Love her. And of course, Mo is the knower of all things. Pride of all time. Let's go, Dan. Uh, well, that's coming out. Uh, she also holds a district record for work order. Mo wants something that's, that's very thick. Uh, and one of Mo's evaluations, Mo was quoted as saying, "All eyes on me," which pretty much sums up her classroom presence. So, she had a me, I say, level authority. Uh, she never let students coast because Mo actually wants students to learn. Uh, she once said that her worst day teaching will still be her best day at the ad agency. We believe that. Now, she's going to be trading over to library books and work order forms for time with her loved dogs and. So, Mo, congratulations. Greatness.
Upon your retirement, Senior in Central School District, uh, by the way, I just. Honored from Wilson, District Wilson, New York, given in grateful appreciation to Morgan Locke, dedicated service during an honorable career, 79 years. Thank you.
That's all I have.
That was one.
Good try.
Yeah.
She's been super good.
Remember that.
So, Meg is retiring after an incredible 34-year career in education. She taught fourth grade for 17 years and spent the last 10 years teaching fifth, impacting hundreds of students along the way with her steady presence and deep understanding about math and literacy. I can personally say that I learned just as much math as her students have from you, so thank you for that. Um, Meg has also been one of my votes with people when I needed a sounding board or a straight answer. Her insight and honesty has never, and has been very, uh. Beyond the classroom, Meg dedicated 25 years to serving her colleagues, 10 years as a building representative, followed by 15 years as the WTA president. She led through some of the district's most challenging moments, a school merger, three-year contract negotiations, pandemic, countless convoys, so her leadership, her resilience, and her advocacy has made a lasting mark for her colleagues. Outside of school, I learned a lot about Meg, which is really cool. So, she coached for Wilson for 18 years, including a championship-winning Marcy girls soccer team. She is a two-time Wilson Hall Fame adductee, once for coaching and once for softball, and she's earned spots in Western Europe, New York State, and Kenesha's College Hall of Fame, and she still holds the batting average record at Kenesha's. Um, so I know that I never brought a bat to my office. Uh, she brought the same joy and energy to every part of her life. I heard about leaving St. Patrick's St. Bridge to the district office, volunteering in fireball press ride, serving at her church, she was on a local hospital boards, just had done a lot for this community. Um, above all, what I claim meant the most to her was teaching alongside her friend, including 23 years with her sister, her best friend, and finishing her career teaching on the same team as her niece. Um, it was a bond that added something really special to our community. Meg loves teaching, she loves kids, and she loves bringing joy to those around her. Wilson is her home, has been 55 years, and school has been for 45. Saying goodbye to Meg is going to be very hard for her students, her colleagues, for me, for, for everyone, and she's going to be deeply missed. She leaves behind a legacy of a lot of leadership, a love for learning and laughter. Um, congratulations, we miss.
I thought it was just me. I'm one of you. For six years I was here, that's what your job was, helping to do it.
You did well.
On your retirement, Wilson Central School District, to your given grateful appreciation, Margaret Thompson, dedicated service during an honorable career, October 34th, this is 31, so it's got to be between 31 and 34 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Then I'll talk about Julia Jeffers. She's our music teacher who is retiring after almost 30 years of service to the district. You know, something that went with Julia is the fun that she put into the music classroom. She loves to sing with the kids and help them find their voice. She's fostered self-exploration in the elementary classroom by encouraging students to create their own rhythms and songs through dance and instruments. She has built confidence in students in the classroom and in public performance with the way she's instructed the chorus. Uh, her focus has been on teaching children through music rather than just teaching them music. She's a beloved colleague and friend to all, uh, her, uh, colleagues at the school and specifically the musical department. She's had a very positive impact on her kids, our community. Everyone's worked for her and with her, and she is going to be very much missed. So, congratulations to Julia Jeffers.
And that concludes our retirement portion of the reception.
Want to get a picture of all the retirees, please?
We'd like to have a group picture of the retirees, so we can have all, we got one last time.
Yep, you guys, you guys, you have to scooch out very good, max one. Jason, a little bit more, you have to. Okay, that's, that's two, three. And then we'll have the 1986 softball winners, nice. All right. One, two, three.
Time for, we're going to take a 10, 15-minute break for cupcakes, so please have a cupcake as I can.
Five, and then two, thirty, twenty, eight, six, and two, a second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye, aye, opposed? Motion care.
All right, Mr. Yow.
I plead your role pledge, and I pledge that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, and the Constitution of the United States of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Wilson Central School District Executive Student Board Member according to the best of my ability.
Awesome.
Get a picture of what she needs to put on the website.
Item seven A, accept resignation of employee number 261, effect date 16, 2025, you have motion. So, a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion care. Item B, accept the resignation of portrait girl science teacher, effect 226, 2025, you have motion. So, a second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion care. Item C, accept the resignation of Chayla St. Heinrich, by Press Country Middle School Running Program Supervisor, effect 24, 2025, you have motion. So, a second.
Aye.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Eight personnel appointments, A A Madison Wright as 1.0 FPT, long-term elementary substitute teacher for the WTA agreement, effective September 2nd, 2025. Substitute has met New York State Bureau of Veterans. You have motion.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion care. Item P, Sandra Rady as Summers student intern at the historical Palace Theater, La Porte, New York, to lead up to 80 hours for Wilson Academy of Finance. NavTrac certification under the direction Timothy Carter, Superintendent, at a rate of $15.50 per hour. You have motion.
So move.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion care. Item C, Webster Nash, winner. Item C, Webster Nash winner is unpaid assistant for varsity baseball for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six spring season, under the direct supervision of Coach William Atlas. Can I have a motion? So move. A second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item nine, summer hours for staff. Eight A, resolved at Wilson Central School District Board of Education for the following summer, twenty twenty-five hours for staff, item speed through that, connect motion. So move. Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item ten, other. Eight A, except for results of the May twenty twenty twenty-five A B budget vote and election. Can I have a motion? So move. Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item B, approved of Board of Education meeting schedule for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, can I have a motion? So move. Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item C, approved of disposal of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five ballots for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four budget vote and election per retention and disposal schedule for New York State government records. Motion yes, want. Can I have a motion? So move. Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approved the agreement between Wilson Central School District and Wilson Administrative Personnel Unit, WAPU, effective July third, first, twenty twenty-five through June thirty and twenty thirty. Can I have a motion? So move. A second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item B, approved the agreement between Wilson Central School District and Cassidy Dice to assist the superintendent of schools of media projects for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year, the amount of twenty twenty, or twenty-six dollar per hour, not to see five thousand dollars. So move. A second. Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Nothing under policy on this. Item twelve, committee on special education preschool, special education five oh four plan recommendations by a, approved, or, I'm sorry, well, approved the CPSC, CSC, five oh four D, and S, and IEP recommendation stated June tenth, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion? So move. Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Conference request. Thirteen A, approval conference request for the June tenth, twenty twenty-five agenda, item speed through C, can I have a motion? So move. Second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item fourteen, field trips action required. Approved field trips request for the June tenth, twenty twenty-five agenda, item speed through C, can I, B through C, can I have a motion? So move. A second. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Required item fifteen. What's President Stewart's evidence to report? Posta. Parker, do you have a report?
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, it's the last week of school, school month, uh, it's senior week, so, uh, we're just kinda proving on by, but we'll actually be honest with you. As for me, I just wanted to say, uh, it truly hasn't been out of this certain disposition. I feel like collectively as a school board, we, we did a lot this year. Uh, very happy with the progress we've made. And this is a great start to what I hope to be many years of service, uh, for myself. So, uh, thank you so much for the opportunity, and, uh, yeah, that's, that's about it. I'm really happy.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item eighteen, superintendent, partner for new book. Welcome, thank you everyone for being here this evening, it's honoring our retirees. Good move on their part. Congratulations, I'm obviously a good retiree. This is graduation season, um, besides my own grandson graduating, uh, U P, uh, pre-K across the street on the nineteenth. Not that you guys wanna be there, but I just thought I'd throw that out. Our U P K graduation is gonna be on the twenty-third of June, along with our kindergarten graduations, uh, time I'm sure to be determined. And our fifth grade graduation is gonna be on the twenty-fourth of June. Our high school baccalaureate for the seniors, uh, is going to be across the street, St. Brennan's, late at seven o'clock on twenty Thursday and twenty-sixth. It's the same evening as the Orangeman Award. The Orangeman Award starts between five and five thirty, six o'clockish, and then the baccalaureates, uh, right after. And then, of course, on, uh, board members on June twenty-eighth, nine o'clock is our graduation, and I hope that everybody will be there, and if you're not able to, just let this, uh, be on note, uh, that is a, I prefer to say a poke and dagger, or, uh, a, 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 only bound for us. So, uh, we're also in the middle of hiring season, and we still, uh, just three remaining, uh, staff members to hire, two of which are now the finalists, um, that I'll be meeting with in the next, uh, couple days, next week or so, and then we still have one, uh, hiring committee to go through. So, uh, we should hopefully by our June board meeting, um, have, uh, that, all the positions filled, please. Couple things I wrote are honoring. I think that this Friday is gonna be a pretty special day, a flag day, love honoring a country. Um, I'm looking forward to, uh, being there, giving my address to the, uh, the Wilson community on Flag Day. That's on this, uh, this coming Friday at nine thirty-ish in the morning. So if you wanna come view the parade, you should know the route. And then if you don't wanna view the parade from the sidelines, you're welcome to come to the, in front of the high school lawn, weather permitting. Never done one on the range, so hopefully we're gonna be beautiful skies. Did you order it? I crossed that, awesome. And, uh, board members, I would have, I'm not gonna go into a whole time here, but I just wanna at least voice the fact that district is certainly aware of the heroic efforts of many of our community members and staff members. Last Wednesday night, when one of the coaches from the visiting team had a cardiac incident. We're gonna honor the, many of the people as possible, we're in gathering in list mode at our second board meeting in June. We're gonna honor those members very similar to how we have. Retirees and also the students, I guess, welcome to, that's, that's a time and recognize not only the community members and staff members that were there, who out there, put athlete as the, uh, I keep saying this, but it absolutely strikes me. As the coach who, thank God, is okay right now, on his way to the, okay, said, it wasn't for the quickness of our community and our staff, his fifteen-year-old son watched the fight. Pretty, uh, so I will, uh, have a fairly long presentation to give to them, I hope it's, uh, those community members, the staff members, along with the Wilson Fire Department, South Wilson, uh, the chiefs here to honor them, the, the great work they did out there. That's the, our next board meeting, so it'll be, you know, a seven o'clock start, it is listed as a board workshop, we've already made it to board meeting because we have some, some business to pay care of before the end of the school. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent, encourage her. Like to honor the Skilled USA students, uh, great job, uh, and the retirees, yeah, uh, years of experience for the WTA C, C and all. Is there a special presentation tomorrow?
Oh, that's right, thank you. Tomorrow, it's two thirty, I don't have it in my, remember, anyway? I didn't bring my phone, there's a historical marker that's gonna be dedicated, um, at the Cougar Park, so, uh, that's certainly open to all board members. It was in my, uh, from the helm last week, and I will get, uh, this Friday, there'll be the actual pictures from the south of the ceremony celebration.
Thank you. And again, thanks to the administrators, all the work you've been doing to get the school year lined up, uh, we appreciate, uh, your hard work. Appreciate the work, uh, with the administrative, uh, negotiating team too, uh, getting that lined up, and, uh, professionals, appreciate, you know, working with them, so. Other than that, anybody, any other board members have anything?
Just a, like you Tom, coming on Parker again, I mean, uh, I, we were at a, uh, legislative breakfast, and we all sat around at the breakfast and just talked to each other, and Senator York was there, and Parker right away went up to talk to Senator York, didn't even bother him, just went right out there. Everybody else was sitting there going, I'm not gonna talk to you. Parker did it, and, uh, that's the way you've been all year, you know, you're not afraid to say what's going on in the school, and I think, uh, I think your fellow students really appreciate what you do. For what you've done.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Parker, hope you keep in touch with us.
Oh, alright.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, and I want to say, I wish the retirees were here. I remember in nineteen eighty-nine, one day at high school softball team, hoping to Wilson because we didn't have key fogs on, I was a teacher and I had to get the key from the custodian to get the paint and paper, and we made a couple of things with, uh, Scott helped me out because your wife helped me.
She was on the bus? She was on the way back?
Right, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why, she must have helped me, I don't, but anyway. So I remember that, and then I also remember my daughter going to a, uh, school fair at Lancaster High School, and she met the coach from, uh, Canisius, and as soon as he found out she was from Wilson, Meg Thompson's name came up, and those girls played basketball for her time and they were thrilled. We just don't know the impact that the teachers make on the kids, the students, whether they're in the classroom, whether they're coaching them, and also, um, it wasn't announced that, um, Mary Johnson was also field hockey coach, and she did a phenomenal job with the girls. So, uh, and I wish them all good luck because Wilson is a great place to end your career, and sooner or later they'll take my place on the board. Thank you.
Anything else? Could I make a brief compliment?
Sure, absolutely. Just briefly, uh, I know the retirees aren't here anymore, but for the purposes of setting it on the record, uh, having been a part of the Wilson community as both a student and now, you know, over here at the board, uh, seeing how complicated the business of running a school district actually is, uh, I think I have a slightly unique position to say that, you know, all these retirees are gonna be sort of the best, I mean, it's the people who made this place such a special, uh, community to be a part of, and, uh, their legacy is gonna be a really, really important one, and I think they're gonna set a great example for people. Try to, uh, you know, keep that going, I don't think what problem. Also, uh, Parker, uh, I just wanted to thank you from, uh, where I sit, uh, so much of, like, good governance, good policy at any level, whether it's all about what we're doing now or all the way at the top, comes from showing up, wanting to help people, speaking up, and I think that you've done those things every time, and I think that, you know, that's a lesson for all of us, especially any of the students here, like, you know, making a difference, uh, you know, starts with showing up and starting a conversation, and, uh, you know, it takes one leap, then after that it's pretty, probably. Well, thank you, and good luck with the meaningful next one.
Thank you very much.
What else?
Poor man, I said, what could I get into? This time it isn't here, but I personally know she was, I saw her as a teacher when he first came here to the United States. We adopted him from Columbia, couldn't see what word to make of it, so on the first day we brought him to school, and she was a teacher in fourth grade, and he was terrified, but, he says today that if it wasn't for her, he doesn't know how successful people would be without getting off the ground, that she was just wonderful with him. He tried to run out of school, she caught him, so, she was quick enough to catch him, so. But yeah, we appreciated, uh, her work and all the effort she put into this, uh, early educational, so, yeah, she means.
This is, first, this is out to the public, uh, forum. So, this board is a degenerative, providing an opportunity for residents of the most central school district to be heard. Any person with wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticism about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum do not be allowed. Board may not respond to questions. They should refer to the superintendent of schools at another time. Please be respectful of your comments in three minutes. Anybody wish to address the board, Scott? You're non-out entertaining, uh, motion to adjourn. So move. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.